Okay, good evening, everyone. It's just 7:09 PM. I just want to apologize for us running a few minutes late. This is a new venture for all of us as we move into the virtual age here. It is 7:09, and I'll call the April 13, 2020 City Council meeting to order. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undoubted, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and Thank you all for that. This time, I could ask the clerk to unmute herself, and please call the roll.
Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, large here.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Uh, Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, here.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoskey.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoskey, First District, present.
Councilman William Conlin.
William X. Conlin, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Elizabeth Johnston.
Councilwoman Liz Johnston, Third District, present.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano, Fourth District, present.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton, Fifth District, present.
Councilman Peter Masaro.
Councilman Peter Masaro, Sixth District, present.
Councilwoman Trina McGee.
Councilwoman Trina McGee, Seventh District, present.
Councilwoman Crystal Finelli.
Councilwoman, Eighth District, present.
Councilman Robert Bruno. Did we lose him?
No, I think he turned his volume.
Can't hear you, Mr. Bruno.
Just unmute. Maybe.
Stacy, we know he's here.
We know he's here. Councilman Barry Cohen.
Councilman Barry Cohen, Tenth District, present.
And Chairman Ronald Quagliani.
Ronald Quagliani, Council, large, present. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. We have perfect attendance. We have a quorum. Before we get started, I would just like to take a minute as a council and recognize the loss is that we had in our community this past few weeks. We've had council people that have had personal loss in their life, and we've also had community members pass from COVID-19 and other members that are very ill. So I would just like to take a moment to pause and reflect and have a moment of silence Thank you. And also, would be remiss if I didn't mention the amount of goodwill and good work and community spirit that's been happening all over our community. And just to mention a couple of initiatives for taking place for those that have been laid off, for those that are needy and in need of a meal or things to get through this difficult period. We've had wonderful organizations such as the Rotary and Vertical Church and First Congregation Church and West East Care collaborating together to bring necessary food to community members that need it, to raise money for Chromebooks for those who are less fortunate in our schools, those students that need to be able to learn online. I think it's important to obviously remember all the people on the front lines, our nurses, our doctors, our first responders, our CNAs, essential workers that continue to provide and keep government and keep the economy going. So I think those are our beacons of light, and those are our hope, and that's what we look towards as we get through each day and each week until we get back to some sense of normalcy. So I appreciate the wonderful works that the community is doing at a time like this. We'll enter into public comment. The clerk, I believe, has told me that there are no written comments this evening for public comment. And again, I'd just like to remind the residents that if they'd like to comment on anything that we're discussing or an issue pertaining to the community, to please do so by emailing mdamasaw@westhaven-ct.gov or mailing it to City Hall 355 Main Street, West Haven, Connecticut, and we will read those comments into the record when we receive them. So we will enter into the regular council meeting at this time. Again, for the council members, if they'd like to vote or have discussion, please unmute themselves beforehand. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the March 23, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, Barry Cohen.
Barry Cohen makes the motion, and I saw Gary Donovan with a second. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the April 2, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Barry Cohen, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Cohen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Conlin and Councilman Donovan. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Ask the clerk to please virtually pass out the communications.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, tonight, we have before us Communication A from Mayor Nancy R. Rossi in regards to selection of a city auditor being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hoskey. We have before us Communication B from Mayor Nancy R. Rossi in regards to a memorandum of agreement between the City of West Haven and the State of Connecticut Office of Policy Management being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hoskey. We have before us Communication C from the Tax Collector in regards to overpart refunds for the month of April 2020, which will be filed with tonight's minutes. And we have before us Communication D from Corporation Council in regards to the sale of the Allentown Library, which is being assigned to council as a whole, Councilwoman Hamilton. We have before us Communication E from Finance Director Frank Sepulinski in regards to a Public Works year budget transfer being assigned to Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hoskey. We have before us Communication F from Finance Director Frank Sepulinski in regards to multiple current year budget transfers being assigned to Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hoskey. And we have before us Communication G from Corporation Council in regards to a resolution for the elderly tax freeze being assigned to tax deferral, Chairman Masaro. And that concludes our communications for this night, tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Stacy. First off, it's our committee meetings. First committee is the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Hoskey.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute my thing. I apologize. So the time is 7:18. The committee on Finance is in session. Members present are myself, Bridget Hoskey acting as chair, Councilman Masaro, Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Cohen, and Councilman Bruno. We have before us tonight Communication A. Hold on.
Gary, I'm seeing Bridget Hoskey. Is she in?
Bridget Hoskey.
Okay, I'm in.
Communication A. I have so much static coming back. The communication from.
The microphone.
Communication A from Mayor Nancy Rossi in regards to selection of a city auditor. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamilton approves. Can I have a second?
Second, Barry Cohen.
Barry Cohen. Um, hold on. Any discussion?
Councilwoman, this is Barry Cohen.
I'm getting a lot of statics. I don't know who's not muted. Um, Barry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, if I'm, okay, Chairwoman, the questions that I have are probably going to be best addressed by Director Frank Sepulinski. So if I ask these questions, I apologize in advance if I'm out of order, but I wanted to ask these, so there I go. There's, when I basically got this document on Communication A, the selection of a city auditor, I noticed that this was the sole bidder. Is this unusual versus past years? I mean, has Bloom Shapiro done this in the past for us, or has there been other multiple bidders in the past, or is this the only bidder that came for this? I may ask.
No, we did, in fact, get three bids came in. One was a very small company, only dealt with very, very small municipalities, so we excluded them. Let's see, we had Arata McGladrey also submitted a bid. They actually had a better price, but decided to pull out, as they have, as I understand now, with quite a number of other municipalities. They're moving to support more of a federal level than local municipalities. Bloom Shapiro was our final bidder.
All right, thank you. Another question for you, please, too. On page seven of the document that we were given, it basically talks about the conflict of interest, and right at the bottom of the page, it says, "We," meaning Bloom Shapiro, "we may resign from the engagement without issuing a report." My concern is, and maybe. I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback. But my concern is, is if there happens to be any conflict of interest whatsoever, we would have paid certain invoices, and there would have been certain work product that would have been produced up to a certain time. And so normally, in these type of contracts, when I've seen conflicts of interest being noted in a contract like this, normally, the completed work product should be provided for payments made to date, and there's nothing stated in there to that effect. Also, any audit materials would be forwarded to the new auditor hired by the City of West Haven. I read through this, and I found it very strange that this was not put into the contract simply because we have paid for work product, and you could be halfway through a project, and we discover, or they discover, this conflict of interest, at which point no report would be produced. Could you clarify that for me, please? Thank you.
I'm going to yield to Lee. I'll make a particular legal issue.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, you can. Well, the problem with the auditing firm is it's all or nothing. So usually, if they disengage, they disengage for a conflict of interest reason, and usually the conflict of interest reason sometimes can't be disclosed because it would invalidate their confidentiality issues. So you could, it's, I haven't come across, we've come close, but I haven't come across it, but they have to be in a position where they could, without damaging the client, where they could recuse themselves if they had a conflict of interest. Let me give you an example.
Well, Lee, excuse me, that wasn't my question per se. The question really was, is for whatever reason, if there's a conflict of interest and the work needs to stop, they state in this contract, it says, "We may resign from the engagement without issuing a report." Now, there's certain work product that was completed up to a certain point, and so wouldn't we be entitled to forwarding that work product, which we had paid for, up to a certain point, to our third party? It just seems like they have the, they have the ability here to basically say, okay, we found a conflict of interest, we're halfway through the work, and we're not going to issue a report, nor are we entitled to give you the work, because nowhere in this contract does it state that. So I'm just confused.
Well, then you, then you're, I'm sorry, then you'd be fighting over, it's, look, it's one or the other. Either you get the work product or you get the money. So if they want to hang on to the work product, then they don't get paid. If they want to give us some work product, then maybe we pay for some work product. So that's how that would work. If they don't give us any work product.
We're getting work product all along there. We're not waiting till the end, because the way I read this is like you're getting audited, and you're going to get an audit report at the end. So you could be working halfway through the audit and find there's a conflict of interest, and you're getting billed all along, and we're billing them as the work progresses. Are we getting work product as it progresses through each payment, or are we getting the work product at the very end?
You get some. I mean, they're asking, they're asking you questions, they're delivering to you some of the work product that they do. Again, look, this is an issue. There's a level of professionalism. They have insurance. If you think that they're just trying to get paid without doing any work, then that's going to be an issue for people that regulate, accountants, not just a contract action. So again, this is a standard thing that firms in this field do, and it's because they're in a catch-22 sometimes if they find something and they have a conflict at the same time.
No, I understand that. Okay, you know what? I guess I'm going to move on because I believe that the way it reads right now, there could be a conflict of interest during any point of this audit, they can resign from the engagement without issuing a report. That's what's stated. I'm going to move on, and this question's for Frank. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Frank, on page eight, Engagement of Administration Fees and Others, I know that the fee that we're paying them is $149,500, but there is something here, and it's stated later on in the report, saying delays in rendering services may occur if closing and adjusting process is delayed. And it goes on basically to say that if we're not, if we're not giving things in a timely fashion, or they're not giving the information in a timely fashion, that, you know, that the quote could go up. And my question to you, Frank, and it's probably not a fair one, but I'll ask it, is, has it been any past concerns that we have always run over budgets because there's been a problem or delay in providing materials to the audit agency, where the $149,500 might actually not be the realistic number, it might be higher than this? Or is this pretty safe, that we feel pretty secure that we're able to supply the information as they like it?
Two parts to that answer. One is, I think in the past, definitely, the city has had problems getting data to the auditors.
Correct.
In this past year, we instituted a hard close. Everybody and every department knew that the ledger was closing at the end of September so that the data could go to the auditors. We were on track for a December 31 report from the auditors, and then we wound up with the snag on the Board of Ed, which dragged the audit out. I don't foresee that happening again in fiscal '20, so I think the price quoted is a fair price.
Thank you. And I have one last question. It's a stupid question, but I got to ask it. When they talk about, in the contract, they talk about the supplemental quote, if you will, now, I assume that includes something like auditing the Allentown Fire Department, for instance, because, Fire District, because it's part of the city budget? Would that be a correct assumption?
Yeah, there's going to be three major parts to the audit. One would be the sewer, one would be Allentown, and one would be the general fund.
Okay, and so, and just to confirm, obviously, like, West Shore and Centered Districts are independent, they would not be audited as part of this?
That's correct.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions from the committee? I'm going with a no. Okay, so, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? I believe the motion passes. So the, now we have before us Communication B from Mayor Nancy Rossi in regards to memorandum of agreement between the City of West Haven and the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management. I'd like to extend a motion to move this out of committee.
Motion to approve.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion?
Yep, it's Barry Cohen again.
I wanted to open this up to the entire City Council. If we can just have the Finance Committee ask any of their questions first, but then if anyone else would like to chime in, just raise their hand, and I will recognize you. Anyone? Was that Robert or Barry? Who spoke? I'm sorry.
I, this is Barry, I spoke.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out how to raise my hand, I'm sorry. But anyway, oh, my God. Okay, just one question. I think it's a typo. If you can look at page three of the document, number seven, number seven, page three of the document, it says that findings, findings in the full year 2019 audit by May 31, 2010, I think they meant 2020 there. I just want to make sure it's a typo and needs to be corrected. That's really all I had.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? I want to open up to the entire council. Chairman?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I do have a question for Frank and/or Lee. It would be the top of page four, it'd be item 13, small letter B. City Council will approve a budget for FY '21 that is responsive to comment provided by the MARB. I mean, we all know that the mayor released her budget, or recommended budget to us. Our first Finance Committee meeting is tomorrow, and the budget is fluid, so I would just like to know, if we pass this agreement now, are we boxing ourselves in? Or I would like the finance, the council piece of the finance oversight of the budget to be able to take its full course. So what does the statement mean, Frank or Lee?
This is Lee. I don't think it changes the position we've had, and the same question you've had, Mr. Chairman, for a while. Again, the budget is fluid, numbers change. As you know, we're in this virus situation. We are tracking, not on a daily basis, we are tracking on a weekly basis, revenue, impairing revenue numbers even for this month, for example, to last year and prior years. We're going to be doing a lot of comparisons like that. So that it's responsive to the MARB does not mean any particular outcome. What it does mean is what I've, what I've said before, which is, you know, you can't, the budget has to be a responsible budget, meaning that you could have a budget that, despite what your five-year plan says, based on all the factors, mandates a $2 million increase, or it mandates no tax increase. I mean, it depends on if you have the numbers to support it, that depends on whether it's a responsible budget. What you, what you can't do is do acts of fiction, which is if you know, for instance, let's say you know you need $1 million to fund the police pension, but you're only going to fund it $100,000, you're not going to be able to do that. You know, so I don't think this changes any stance or any discussion point we've had on this particular area that you've raised before. I think the word responsive is open to interpretation, but I would say responsive means responsible in that instance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman Mossad.
Any other questions? Um, it is my belief that, to, my request is for us to hold this until our next council meeting, to bring it out fully for a vote. It would give us time to get input from the public. Would you take back your motion to second?
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I think Councilman Masaro wanted to have discussion.
Oh, my, does he want to unmute himself? Oh, he can, go ahead, I'm sorry, Councilman.
All right, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, for some reason, I can't seem to get a hold of He's there, but he's trying to get on.
Can he hear us? He's muted.
Yes, I believe he's fine.
So I'd be interested in holding this until our next meeting on the 20, I don't know what date it is, the 27? You'd be interested in taking back your second, Councilman? I believe it was Barry, correct? You're muted.
Yes, 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 I'm waving, yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hamilton, will you take back your initial approval?
Yes, I withdraw it.
We'll hold this until the 27th. Thank you. Let me go back to my paper. So we have before us now Communication, I'm sorry, A, F? Am I on F?
E.
E, yes. I apologize, my cat jumped on the table and took all the papers off again. So Communication E from Finance Director Frank Sepulinski in regards to Public Works current year budget transfer. And this is, um, I'd like to move this out favorably. Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Councilwoman Hamilton, have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And we have before us Communication F from Finance Director in regards to multiple And we have before us Communication F from Finance Director in regards to multiple current year budget transfers. I'd like to bring this out favorably. Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Robert Burnout, second.
Thank you, Robert. Um, is there any discussion?
This is Councilman Cohen.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay. I, Frank, these questions are, are for you and I respect that if you can't comment on them, I can hold off on them until we have our committee meeting. It's just a couple of the numbers here that I, I just didn't understand. I looked at the, um, well, I, if you can add some clarification, Frank, and if you can, I respect that. Interdepartmental transfer for Highway and Parks Administration. There was a $30,000 transfer amount that went, that basically went to overtime. And I, I don't have a question with the $30,000 so much, but if you can, if you know or if you don't know, that's fine. I'm just surprised to see that snow removal was still $85,000 considering we had a pretty mild winter. So even with 115 taking out 30, do you have any comment on that? If you can't comment, I respect that. We're just, we're just sticking up with the sword.
No, the majority of these transfers were to take care of line item questions that the council had. Why one line item was over or another line item was under. So for the, for the bulk of them, with the exception of, I believe, the one on top, everything is being moved either between line items within, within that family, Public Works, or moving from another department that will have favorability on that line to cover any, any overage or underage.
Okay, I, I get that. What I'm going to do is, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say that, um, so making the transfer, making the money out of the line item reserved for snow removal was a pretty safe bet, given that we are into mid-April. I don't expect a snowstorm coming.
I got you. Thank you. And just, I have one other question because the rest of this is pretty granular. That can wait for the department heads. And on the very, very bottom of the sheet, we talk about, I'll read this. Move unneeded pension contributions. And, and I was surprised, again, it's my naivete perhaps, but I was surprised to see that, that the police pension, that we moved close to, close to $295,000 out of the police pension to, I guess it's a contingency, like a rainy day fund, the unallocated. I was just surprised to see that amount of money being moved out of a pension. Could you comment on that? I was just, um, I, I, I was surprised to see that it was unneeded. So.
Un, great question. Unneeded was, was probably misleading. When the budget was prepared, we had not yet received the final valuation from the actuary. So they provided us with an, with an estimate. Those estimates are historically very conservative. So the budget went through with, with the $2.5 million in it. When the actuary report came in, the actual ADAC, the required contribution from the city, was that 250-something thousand dollars lower than was actually in the budget. So what I wanted to do was, since we will be making the lower contribution as required by the actuary, I wanted to make sure that those line items were clean so that an auditor would not come back and ask us why we did not put in the fully budgeted amount.
Thank you. And just one last question, just a clarification for myself. Is the very last number, we talk about unallocated expenses and we're able to bring that number up to about $650,000. Is that more or less a general, general funded contingency, like a rainy day fund? Like, you know, it's like, what is that fund specifically, you know, given the times that we're in? Yeah.
Yep, that is the rainy day fund for the year. So theoretically, that account would have been used to cover the $60,000 payment for the Bailey school roof.
Right.
That wasn't being absorbed by the Board of Education.
Gotcha. And we were able to pay for the Bailey school roof because we transferred it out of another line of Public Works, I believe. It looks like.
That is correct. It, uh, it came out of the Engineering Department. In the budget, we did have a, um, a deputy engineer who has not been here. So we were able to save on those wages.
Yeah. So, yeah, I call it Public Works, but engineer. So I see. Otherwise, it would have come out of that 650, out of the rainy day.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Does anyone else from the Finance Committee have any questions regarding these transfers? I have some questions, but I'll hold off. Um, I'll open it up to the entire council at this time. If you have any questions? Crystal?
Um, is there a question about the overtime from the highways and parks? Do we know, it just seems odd in a year that we really, really got any snow, that at this point in the year, they would need that much more money for overtime? Do we know what exactly that was for? Or is that normal?
It's not that they'll need more money. It's that they exceeded their budget. And they exceeded that in the first four months of the year as they were able to go out and start working on projects that had been delayed from the prior year.
Okay.
Did you have any follow-up questions, Councilwoman?
Do we have any, like, specific information on those projects? Or is that something we'd have to ask Public Works for?
We'd have to get, I'd have to get that from Public Works to find out exactly what they were working on.
Okay. I'm also, I think Mitch had his hand raised.
I did.
Go ahead, Councilman Gagliano.
Thank you. Frank, so I was looking at unallocated expenses or contingency and intra-permark, inter-permark transfers up above where you have pension contribution. You have 341, 759 over there because you took $15,000 out. But on the bottom, you have the 357, 159 with the 294 added into it. So is that 51, 842 accurate or is it $15,400 less than that?
That should be accurate. That number would reflect the starting point from up above and showing any and all movements that had occurred in the individual line items before that one.
Because I'm still confused. I would think it would be $15,400 less because... All right, if that's, I, I, I'm confused. That's all.
I can cir, I can circle back and, and validate that for you.
Okay, because I would think it would be less, but I, I, just my math would tell me that, but, okay. I, I, I just saw that and thought there was a difference there. That's all. Thank you. I'm good, Councilwoman. Chairwoman?
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions in regards to the budget transfers? Chairman?
Thank you. Frank, I have to follow up on Councilwoman Finelli's question. So was there a overtime surplus in last year's budget because we didn't get to the projects that we were supposed to get to last year?
Uh, I can double check that for you, but I think we were under budget in some of the overtime.
And $30,000, you anticipate using that in, in the rest of this fiscal year? Is that, how do we get to that number?
That I got based on where I was projecting the year-end to be.
So that's the input with the department head?
Correct. It's, it's also using, um, using the last three or four years' worth of actual timing. So looking at we are, where we are at this point in the year, using prior years to develop where we would be if everything came through on a consistent timing basis.
The, um, the Bailey roof. I always thought that we couldn't commingle capital dollars with operating dollars. So a capital project couldn't be paid out of the operating budget. Is that, is that not true?
We needed to get it paid and that was the line item that had, was actually specified as building repair.
It's not going to be an audit issue be, because of those dollars or should be capital dollars?
I can, I can follow up. I'll make a note. I'll follow up with, with Bob Z tomorrow. And if it is, we'll come back to you with another transfer to, uh, to move it into a capital.
Mr. Chair, the reverse is true. If you bonded for a capital project, you're not supposed to use it for general operating expenses.
Correct.
So this way is, it's just the other way. It's not this way? This way is okay, using operating dollars for capital expense.
That's correct. If you bond, you need to use that for capital activity.
And then Frank, just lastly, if I'm reading, it says city, city granted benefits, health insurance premiums, um, from 10.6 to 9.6, a million dollar difference. How did, what did that, what does that correspond to?
That is, um, if you recall, in the fiscal '20 budget, we were required by the MARB to put in an as-yet-unidentified savings of $1.2 million. We realized that, um, the bulk of that savings, roughly a million dollars, would be realized by moving to the Connecticut Partnership Plan. So all I'm trying to do is to move that line item out of unidentified and actually put it into the line items where we believe those savings were going to come from. Uh, and then we can do the analysis at the end of the year to see exactly where we landed.
So it's going from unidentified to those accounts, the health insurance, the runoff, the electricity and the streetlight?
That is correct.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman Mossad for now.
Does anyone else have any questions? Sorry, there's sirens coming by my house. Um, I do have a couple of questions myself in regards to, looking through my emails since I don't have the paper. I'm just going to follow up in regards to Councilwoman Finelli's comments in regards to the $30,000 request that, um, we're looking to transfer into overtime for highways and parks. My concern is, is, I'm trying to, I don't know where the balance is, but we're already over the $200,000. So we're currently, like, we've already surpassed that, right? Aren't we at like 204, like, we're like $4,000 over, correct, currently? Frank, you're muted.
Sorry. Yes, that's why we're moving money into that line item because we're over.
Right. So we're currently $4,000 over.
Correct.
Right. So we're looking, so basically, we've already gone over. So we're thinking $26,000 will be for April, May and June.
That is correct.
Okay.
I can go back and revalidate the sentences around that.
I'm just saying that $26,000 of overtime in three months is a lot of money. It is a lot of money. And I do understand that, um, a lot of, none of those workers are allowed to take vacation time during the winter because they're expected to be on call and because of bad weather. So that I think that's my understanding as to why so much overtime generally happens in the fourth quarter of our fiscal year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But, but it still just seems that in this time of we are having, um, a pandemic, a national health crisis, what are we going to be doing? You know, and I, and I know you don't know that, but I'm just saying like, what are we really going to be doing? Because can we truly have crews out there of five to six men working? And, and I know we're not, and, and, and I know the Commissioner, Commissioner McCarthy is, is ensuring, you know, I'm not saying of that, but I'm just saying like, what are we really going to be able to accomplish when we are essentially on lockdown? That we're going to be offering all of this overtime if we're not basically just doing what I would think would be what needs to be done? I mean, I just, just don't understand why we would need an additional $26,000.
Just because the line item is new, does not mean that that's going to end up moving. What I didn't want to have to happen was to come back to you again by moving $5,000 into it and have them go over by another couple thousand and then have to come back and transfer another couple thousand over.
No, I, I understand that, but if we've already blown through so much money, it, it just, it, I just want, I know you're saying that. I'm just one, you know, it, that's just a lot of money. And I know that it, um, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to spend it, but it doesn't mean that you're not going to come back in a couple of months and ask for another $10,000 transfer. I can say that right back to you. Like, so $30,000 is it? Like, you're, you're, you're speaking that, that there's no way that it's going to go above this. So.
The only, right, the only, the only really neat transfers that were made is because I was informed that there were concerns by some of the council members that even though the departments may be whole, individual line items are over/under. So the request was made to me, just move some money around and get it through the head.
Oh, you're absolutely right. That would be me. That was me that was overly concerned about that, like, with, you know? No, it was me, but I'm more concerned with the fact that they've gone over their budget. I, I'm, you know, I only make a certain amount of money and I have to stay within that. You know what I mean? And so irregardless if the department has $500,000 in their budget, I don't, I don't believe that they should be able to then take money from somewhere else. So you're right. I, I mean, money does have to be transferred and people are concerned, oh, it's, it's the, it's the budget as a whole. Well, no, no, not really, because we don't give somebody $500,000 for the year. We give them a budget and each line item has that money there. So the argument, I get both sides to it. I just think that, you know, you have your savings and then you have the money you use for your bills. You, you shouldn't have to touch your savings to pay for your bills. And to me, if you don't spend all the money in your line item, well, that money should be flipped and taken away and put somewhere into our savings. We shouldn't take from our savings to put it back. But I have just another question and I, and, and, um, about the pension in the police. Can you just explain to me why we wouldn't want to overfund that? Like, why, and I heard what you said, if we, they came back and audited us, we'd have to explain. But why would that be a problem, having more money in that, um, pension? Or was I confused?
So, it's entirely up to the council that we want to make a higher contribution than is needed. All I'm doing is adjusting the loan item down to the level that we are required the budget to find.
Okay. But, and I know that there's a minimum requirement, but isn't the police pension, like, the pensions in the city underfunded? Wouldn't we be ahead?
Police pension is funded in Ninety Seven, which is among one of the top towns in the state. If Allentown Fire is funded, it only 26%.
We should put the money in that account. Okay. I mean, I mean, if there's extra money, but, okay, that's all the questions I have.
I was just, don't forget that you just lost $30 million out of your general fund.
Oh, I didn't forget. We, well, let's, we didn't lose it. It was, well, now that you bring that up, can I ask a question regarding that?
Sure.
That line item that was audited, like, we found that line item in the last audit where there was discovered that it wasn't properly calculated, whoever, the person who does that for the Board of Ed. And so, when we audited it, when we had it audited, the company came in. Had that line item ever been audited in prior years, that account, that grants, whatever?
The line items were transportation and tuition were the largest line items that were insufficiently accrued for.
So, the auditors had never audited that particular fine before? I guess that's what I'm asking.
They audited everything. They audited all the line items. I don't know what process was used in the past. I don't know what the difference was, that they caught it this year and didn't catch it in any of the last six years. But the fact is that it was caught this year and was corrected.
So, there, Lee, we can't hold them accountable for their miss in prior years? Because we're saying that this has gone back numerous of years. Why are they not held accountable for a faulty accounting or audit for us?
It's more complicated than that. I mean, if you really want a specific accounting of it, we can. But suffice it to say, there are arguments on both sides on that issue and evidence on both sides of that issue. The other part of it is, it's the question of, you didn't really lose $3 million. What it is, is they're forcing you to make the payment. If they didn't catch this, you'd be, this would just have carried on yet another year. So, there's no money, it's not like, there's no money lost here. It's not like the mistake cost the city money. It was an exercise that the city was engaged in. However, we haven't waived any of our rights. And we'll go back and keep looking at this. But at present, you know, in a surface view of what's going on, there appears to be arguments on both sides as to whether or not, you know, it was the accounting. Accounting firm argues, no, 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 here, they can show in a few places where they alerted the Board of Ed to this and the city to this. The, there are other questions that you had the same auditor and how did he not pick it up? So, we're going to have to revisit this at a later time. It's generally not the practice to try to sue your auditor until he completes the audit. So, I think we have time and we'll revisit this issue in terms of whether or not we have any legal claims. We're not waiving any of our, we haven't and will not waive any of our legal rights.
No, I appreciate that, Mayor. Yes, go ahead. Yes. I was joking. Thank you. It wasn't that I didn't mean that we lost it. When you lose something, it's like you're being careless. I just thought the word "loss" isn't really a great depiction or a word I would use to say what happened in regards to the contingency fund. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? So, I would make a motion to approve, wait, not approve. All in favor, I'm sorry. Just the finance.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries and the Committee on Finance is closed at 8:08.
So, thank you, Councilwoman Hasky. But if I could ask you to go back up to the beginning item regarding the update on the FY '20 budget and cash flow. I think Frank was going to present something to us. I noticed he's no longer in his square. So, we can always come back to it if you'd like.
Here he comes. Frank, my apologies. I missed you presenting. I don't know where my agenda went. Mike, take a minute. About the FY '20 budget.
The FY '20 budget?
Yeah, Frank, if, Finance Committee, it says, update on the FY '20 budget, cash flow. I mean, I had asked the Chair of the Finance Committee if we could put it on to kind of, you give us a snapshot of what the year-end budget's coming in based on what you're seeing with this pandemic? And we just want to make sure that there are no surprises that you could see.
Before the pandemic hit, we were looking at, I was projecting about a $600,000 surplus for the general fund. I have no idea how the revenues are going to play out in the fourth quarter. Fortunately, the majority of the tax revenues have already been collected. The only large hole or potential issue that may hit us is if we are unsuccessful at doing the lien sale before the end of the year. That, the sale of those liens bring in roughly a million dollars in uncollected taxes. So, that would be a hole in the budget. So, I know Leslie is working diligently to get that RFP all pulled together. I think I saw some preliminary activity today. I'd have to go back and check. But as of right now, we are projecting, if everything works correctly, we are projecting a surplus in all three funds, Allentown, the general fund, as well as the sewer fund.
Councilman, can I ask a question for Frank?
Yes.
So, Frank, you know, there's been so many different aspects of these stimulus packages that have come out over the last several weeks. And I know that, you know, clearly with the unemployment rates, what they're at, not only are there programs to assist individuals, but there's also programs to assist employers. A couple of those programs are the Paycheck Protection Program that allows employers under 500 employees to get some type of funding, grant funding from the government, if in fact, they keep their people working. And then, 75% of that is forgivable if you meet the specifications. The other is furlough. So, my understanding is, is that there's a whole harmless furloughs out there that if you're an employee that makes 60, I believe it's 67,500 or less, that you could be furloughed and based on your unemployment and your stimulus, $600 per week from the federal government, that you actually are break even. So, I guess my question is, as amity is for the mayor, you know, have we looked at any of these programs to help assist us? I think it's admirable that city government is still working and I believe everybody is still working. So, maybe the Paycheck Protection Program would be something that may suit us to take a second look at. I'm just wondering if we have looked at any of those particular programs. It's up to you, whoever wants to answer, Mayor, Frank or Lee.
I can answer in terms of the FEMA, we have enacted in our monitoring in terms of the FEMA funds and other reimbursements that you talk about. It's not 100% reimbursement, but the right groups have been told to track all their time and hours, including myself, so that we can seek reimbursement. And we're working through the grant writer that's being quarterbacked by Doug Coulter currently. And we expect, just like we did with, it's a very similar process to when we got refunds from Sandy. So, we're going to exercise the same stance of Sandy. The federal government saw fit to give us an unfunded mandate in their recent enactments. There's a COVID-pay-full salary for two-week program where if you meet certain COVID-related ailments or difficulties, the city pays two-week salary, doesn't come out of your accrued time, doesn't come out of your sick time. If we were a private employer, we could get reimbursement through our contribution to the Social Security and federal government tax payment. But they saw fit to exempt municipalities because according to the testimony and dialogue in the Senate and the House, municipalities don't go out of business. Apparently, they have already forgotten about Detroit. So, we have had people who are exercising their right to use that program. So, you know, we're getting everything else in West Haven, two forward, one back. And I'll let, you know, we've talked about furloughs, but I'll let the mayor speak to furlough.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. And I reckon, you know, you're the executive. So, you have a better handle on your staffing than I do. And I'm not advocating for it, but I know that these programs are there. And I guess, how about the Paycheck Protection Program, Lee? Does the city, is the city not able to take advantage of that? Because it seems like we're, you know, we are keeping our people working. So, is there an opportunity to participate in that program?
Yeah, currently, the only program that it appears we would qualify for, and it's on the same level of reimbursement, would be the FEMA program where they're already paying us. You have to understand that when the bill went forward, they did a separate bill for municipalities. For example, we got an extra $442,000 in CDGB funds just allocated days ago. I'm sure there'll be other allocations that we'll be able to take advantage of. But they're not necessarily, the focus on what you're describing is to get those private businesses, things like restaurants, back moving, hoping people can keep those guys employed. The focus of the bill clearly wasn't on municipalities.
Okay, thank you. Before I yield the floor, Councilwoman, I just, as a note, I've had a couple of people text me. It seems like that although we hear the mayor very clearly that the public cannot hear the mayor's responses, I don't really know how to get by that tonight, but at least recognize that we know that. And hopefully, that when the city puts this on the website tomorrow, that maybe that could be rectified. Thank you.
I do have one question. Unfortunately, it's for the mayor, or maybe Frank can speak to it. One of the concerns is that to it. Um, one of the concerns is, is that, like you said, you know, you do have people in, um, City Hall that aren't working for whatever reason. What is the plan? Because I know that we've had some payroll issues and we have an investigation underway as to why payroll didn't go out correctly a few weeks ago. What happens if there is a problem with payroll? If the people, person who does payroll, have, have we figured out what we're going to do? Um, if that person ends up unable to perform their duties? Right. I guess I'm just speaking to is that what do we do if the people, have we, have, have, have we, um, filled the gaps? Have we trained anybody to be able to do payroll in lieu of the one person or possibly two people that can do it? I know that's been a problem in the past, and I believe that's the backlog, whatever the issue. I mean, I know, you know, do we have a plan in place? You know, who's going to do payroll if the
Until we get to a point where we're doing, you know, regular weekly payroll with overtime included. So Frank, I don't know if there's something you want to add to that question as well, but the intent is to cross train and to, and we're going to, as I said, have a vendor there shortly. Can they hear me now? Dave just, let's see if they can hear me. Okay. Dave just went and came in and switched something. So I don't know if the public can hear me now.
So I think-
Can all of you still hear me or do we?
Yeah, so I think that, um, to answer, uh, Councilwoman Hasky's question, we'll get it done in any way we can. Um, if that means calling Tyler, uh, as we did last time, the, the MUNIS support and walk us through it, uh, we'll do it that way. Um, my accounts payable person has been out for the last two weeks because she is in a at-risk group. And quite frankly, I don't blame her. Um, so tomorrow, I will be there punching numbers into MUNIS to try to get vendors paid. Um, better things to do, but I got to get the vendors paid. Um, we will do whatever needs to be done to try to get this, you know, get this behind us.
If, if, if I can add, Councilman Hasky, the, the other thing we're doing is we've been leveraging resources in the Board of Ed and Board of Ed leverages our resources. So the, as the Board of Ed adds individuals, we use those individuals on our side and we're allowing them to use individuals on, from our side. So, um, we think we're pretty much covered. And at the same time, we're creating a more efficient system and a system that's going to be leveraging technology better. And we are, we have met with and we're clear that we're going to get the payroll out no matter what.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any, um, questions or comments for Frank? Okay, so now Finance Committee is done and the time is 8:24.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hasky. Um, I don't know, uh, if Councilman Massaro could speak with us. Councilman Massaro, are you, uh, able to? I believe that means no. Councilman Conlin, are you able to stand in for Councilman Massaro on tonight's Communication G? You're muted, Councilman Conlin.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, try to handle this. We've got before us a, a Communication D about the Allentown Library bid.
No, that's not the one, Councilman. That's, uh, Tax Deferral Committee.
Okay, so you-
Councilman G.
G. Okay, this is about the, uh, freeze on the, uh, increases for the seniors in their taxes, uh, because of the, uh, COVID-19 problem and, and people having trouble get to City Hall and everything else. Uh, I don't have before me who is on the, oh, here it is. This committee is which then, uh-
Tax, Tax Deferral.
Tax Deferral Committee. Oops, I still don't have who's on that committee in front of me, but, uh-
I could help you with that, Councilman. So, um, it's Tax Deferral Committee, Council, uh, Man Conlin will, will, uh, stand in for Councilman Massaro who's having audio issues. Committee members are Councilman Massaro, Councilman Conlin, Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Galagnano, and Councilwoman O'Connor.
All right. Uh, could I have a motion to pass this recommendation that we, uh, continue this freeze for the time being?
No move.
Councilman O'Connor, I'm not-
Okay, and a second please. Do someone second?
Okay.
Is there any discussion at this time? In which case I'll ask, uh, for a vote in the committee, all those in favor, please.
Aye.
If there are anyone opposed, anyone, uh, abstained. In that case, the measure passes in council and the, um, Tax Deferral Committee is finished at 8:27.
Thank you, Councilman Conlin. Sorry to put you on the spot, but nice job.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is, uh, unfinished business. We have Attorney Tarran will give us updates on the Haven as well as, uh, uh, any city-related COVID-19 items you'd like to discuss with Attorney Tarran?
Yeah, I just have an old trouble to mute. Um, okay, so, well, first of all, um, you know, obviously the, um, Allentown development continues and they don't always get recognition as to what they're doing, but I think anybody that drives by there is happy with the product, the process and the project. Um, as to the Haven, uh, I was called by the Haven because obviously if you read the news, you might have some concerns. There's stock dropping, uh, they had some furloughs. And I was called, I didn't call them, but I was called to assure them they're going forward. Um, there's nothing about the project that's being delayed. Uh, I plan to be in contact with the chief. I, we talked yesterday, we're going to try to get the exact day that we have road closures and we are probably going to do the two-way bayview with the, uh, locking of the end of it, you know, sooner rather than later so that the fencing on the project can be a little more secure and better. Well, I hope to have that done within a week. And then, uh, I think you're going to see further progress on that project. Um, they're all, I mean, they have a general contractor and we're just working to see about the subs to make sure local people get an opportunity and they use, um, the proper union labor. Oh, COVID-19. Um, first, I know that there have been a number of groups and people and volunteers, and I don't want to slight anybody, so I want to say on behalf of the city, thanks to everybody who reaches out. Sometimes we can't use your service for one reason or another, but a lot of volunteer services have been used just to deliver a meal or two or cheer up an elderly person or, uh, a wide variety of resources. Um, the Best Western, I think, gets positive recognition because they did initially for free provide some rooms for us. I will not speak further on that. Uh, University of Haven has provided rooms for our, um, our first responders and they should be recognized for that. And that's a really gracious thing that they did for the city. And I know he wouldn't take credit for this himself, but your chairman made sure that, uh, while New Haven was negotiating their rooms, he made sure that West Haven rooms were set aside for West Haven. He coordinated that with the mayor and we should all be grateful for that, as should our first responder. Yale University, who has property and we work with here in the city of West Haven, has also stepped up to provide, uh, rooms and assistance. Um, we're going to keep looking for different resources though, we're not going to stop. And, um, you know, our health director, what, one of the things we've done that's positive, the mayor touched on, where possible, we have been reallocating resources of employees where they maybe not be as busy. And we try to re, reallocate them to the Health Department. And I have to say, there have been some people in the city, some employees who really stepped up and would make you proud as to the work they did in departments that were not their own, especially the Public Health Department. So there's a lot of positive things going on. Um, whether the curve's flattening, I'll leave to your Public Health Director. Um, but this too shall end, and when it does, we need to be in a position where we're ready to participate like the city we know we are.
Thank you, Attorney Tarran. Does anyone have any questions on either topic for Attorney Scanning the squares. Don't see anything. All right. Thank you, Attorney Tarran. Okay, we'll enter, uh, into Committee Reports. Um, the clerk could read Communication C
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have before us Communication C from the Task Collector in regards to overpayment refunds for April 2020, which will be filed with tonight's minutes.
Thank you. Stacy. All right, we'll have the committees report out to the whole council now. The first committee is the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Hasky. Okay, I unmute you, the Councilman.
It was hourglassing. Thank you. I couldn't get it. Um, so, thank you. Um, to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the matter of selection of a city auditor, reports that the committee met on the 13th day of April 2020 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Of the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the hiring of Plum Shapiro of 25 South Main Street, West Hartford, to perform the annual audit for FY21.
Councilwoman Hasky's brought forward Communication A from Mayor Nancy R. Rossi in regards to a selection of a city auditor, as was read into the record. Is there a second?
A second, I will, I will.
Second by Councilman Bruno. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Is there any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Um, Communication B, um, we're going to hold. To the Honorable, um, to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your commute, your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the matter of select, nope, that's the same one. Hold on, I'm sorry. Um, um, to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the matter of Public Works' current year budget transfer, reports that the committee met on the 13th day of April 2020 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous decision of the committee that the following motion be presented. The City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the following current year budget transfer. Line item 11900012-51000, regular wage decrease of $5,000. Line item 14706010-53445, safety supply increase of $5,000.
Councilwoman Hasky brought forward Communication E from Finance Director Frank Tulinski in regards to a Public Works' current year budget transfer, as was read into the record. Is there a second?
Second, Barry Cohen.
Second by Councilman Cohen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Anna.
To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the matter of multiple current year budget transfers, reports that the committee met on the 13th day of April 2020 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolve. The City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the following current year budget transfer to assign unidentified savings per Marb account 19009990-56000, not otherwise classified, increase of 100,000, 100 and, sorry, let me do this right. Is that, I can't tell, it's too- I was thinking it was a period. 1,245,267. 18, 18109982-54110, health insurance premiums decrease by $1 million. 19009990-56010, medical runoff 3% decrease of 45,260, 14606075-52110, maintenance electricity decreased by 100,000. 147040152160, street lighting decreased by 100,000. Move remaining runoff hedge to health insurance. I'm sorry, I'm reading this from my phone, it's hard. 18109982-54110, health insurance premiums increase by $274,340. 19009, 19009990-56010, medical runoff 3% decrease by 274,340. Cover election expense from unused consulting, 11250010-52290, election day expense increase $2,500. 12100010-56210, services Marb decrease $2,500. Intro department transfer- Intro department transfer, 1130001051500, overtime increase $2,800. 11300010-51400, temporary payroll decrease $2,800. Intro department transfer, 12300010-52280, map printing decrease $3,000. Intro department transfer, 13100010-526, did I, oh no, 3-0, rental of vehicles increase by $3,000. 13100010-53210, automotive fuel and fluids decrease of $3,000. Intro departmental transfer, 1310030-52780, uniform allowance full-time increase by $9,500. 13100030-51801, workers increase by $9,500. Intro department transfer, 14509971-52915, trash pickup city buildings increase of $37,000. 14509971-52910, trash pickup decrease $37,000. Fund Bailey School roof repair with unused wages, 14606075-52530, building maintenance and repair increase $63,553. 14100010-51000, regular wages decrease $63,553. Intro department transfer, 14706076-52130, water increase $3,500. 14706076-52110, electricity decrease $3,500. Intro department transfer, 1470401-51500, overtime increase of $30,000. 14704010-51550, snow removal decrease of $30,000. Cover election expenses from unused consulting, 19009990-56360, bank service fees increase of $24,000. 12100010-56210, consulting services Marb decrease of $24,000. Intro department transfer, 19009990-56140, primary expense increase $9,000. 19009990-56305, election expense decrease of $9,000. 19009990-56220, actuary valuation increase of $15,400. 19009990-56010, contingency decrease of $15,400. Move unneeded pension contribution to contingency per actuary report, 18109982-54141, pension police decrease $294,683. 19009990-56010, unallocated contingency increase of $294,683.
Sorry, Councilwoman, could you repeat that? Don't like it. Councilwoman Hosky's brought forward Communication F from Finance Director Frank Chulinski in regards to multiple current year budget transfers, as was read into the record. Is there a second?
Robert Bruno, second.
Robert Bruno, second. Is there any discussion on these transfers? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, next up is Tax Deferral Committee standing in for Councilman Massaro. Again, those having audio problems is Councilman Conlin.
To the City Council of the City of West Haven, your Tax Deferral Committee met on April 13, 2020, in regards to a resolution for the elderly tax fee program, and unanimously approved that applicants approved during fiscal year 2018-2019 for relief applied to July 2019 tax bills for tax relief pursuant to city ordinances. Property tax relief, senior tax freeze programs for certain elderly and/or disabled homeowners shall automatically renew for a one-year period only, and said relief shall be considered approved and applied to tax bills due on January 1st, I'm sorry, on July 1st, 2020. Could I have a motion to approve this?
I'll take care, I'll take care of that, Council, Councilman, but thank you for reading that. Attorney Tarran? So Councilman Conlin read the summary. Does the whole resolution need to be read into the record, or is the summary satisfactory?
As long as you refer to the summary, the summary is satisfactory. And the minutes need to reflect that it meant the entire request, or the entire resolution.
So Councilman Conlin read the summary. So, summary, as long as we note that it refers to the entire resolution. Okay, thank you. So Councilman Conlin, representing the Tax Deferral Committee, has brought forward Communication G, communication from the Corporation Council in regards to a resolution for the elderly tax freeze program. Summary was read into the record. The entire resolution will be part of the minutes. Is there a second?
Robert Bruno, might the second.
Second by multiple, Councilman Cohen, Donovan, Bruno. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I know Councilman Massaro is in favor of this as well. Any abstentions? A motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll enter, as council as a whole, leading up to council, the whole, it will be the jury leader, Councilwoman Hamilton.
What I wanted to say, ask, can you hear me well? Because on my end, it's not very good. Can you hear me?
You're a bit, you're a bit choppy.
I want to try something. Wait a minute. Please.
Welcome to WebEx. Enter your access code. Your meeting number. [inaudible].
Can you hear me better?
Thank you.
The time is now 3:49.
Do have, if, Councilman, Councilman Hamilton, you do have some feedback.
Okay, one moment. I'm sorry.
We're not all muted.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
And I'm sorry about the interference. The time is now 8:50, and the Committee on Council as a whole is in session with myself as chair.
Councilwoman Hamilton, you still have some feedback. It's, one of the devices needs to be, the volume needs to be down.
Okay, I'm showing myself as muted. Is it still bad?
You're muted, but the volume on your computer is picking you up. So we can't hear you muted on your computer, but it's coming back through your computer. So you have to turn the volume down and mute yourself, if that makes sense.
Okay, my volume's at zero. Is it better?
It's all right. You want me to take it, Councilwoman Hamilton?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but yeah, could do, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so let's go to Communication D from Kirk Council. In regards to the sale of the Allentown Public Library Building. Attorney Tarran?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to discuss Communication D with us?
Yes, so we put the library out to bid for sale. That's the library building in Allentown, 1 Forest Road. We had only two bidders. The developer in Allentown secured a right of first refusal, where they had to match whatever bid was made on that library. So we looked at the Village Improvement Association bid, and Acorn, or the Beckerman Group bid. And so I worked with the Beckerman Group to make sure that their bid encompassed all the positive elements of the library, to make sure it was an equivalent bid. The key elements of the bid are that price paid by Acorn will be $290, but they will advance $500,000. Reason for that is, the library bid $500,000. And so we will collect interest and escrow on the money in excess of $290,000. They will draw down that money to pay their tax. The Library, Village Improvement Association, does not pay property tax on their existing buildings. That had to be factored into the bidding. So that's why we created that provision. In addition, the library will be allowed to stay in their existing building under a lease agreement, which will be negotiated between them and Acorn, for up to three years. Another feature of this, which is not necessarily part of the bidding, is the purchaser of the Blake Building in Allentown has agreed to negotiate to allow the library and a coffee shop on the first floor of its building under a long-term lease arrangement. This is in keeping with the commitment that the mayor has made, that we want to keep a library presence in Allentown. In addition, the Acorn Group has committed to a certain investment in that building, which is rather significant. Tried to outline what I anticipate the tax revenue would be from this building, based on its valuation after the purchase. The Acorn Group agrees they will not seek, nor will they be granted, any sort of tax abatement concerning this property. And I think that's it. I tried to give you some analysis on the library and the library's ability to purchase this building. There are financial records that are online and are public. I hope you have a full package so that you can consider how the council wants to vote on this matter.
So I'll open it up for discussion. The council members have any questions? Or the attorney, or others? Councilwoman Hosky.
For the Blake Building to say that they would house the library, is that, like, are they bonded to that? Like, do we have, like, an official agreement? Like, they, like, there's no way they can back out? Because I would, and then I'm not, I'm just saying that people may say that, like, whoa, the Blake Building said they're going to do that, but do we have, you know, I have a letter from, you know, the superintendent, but do we have, like, a contract that they will definitely do it, and they're bound to do it? Or is it based on what they propose the rent to be, and if we're willing to pay that rent? Like, what, is there anything that we need to know about, you know, can we find out a year later that, oh, look, the library's gone? See, we told those city council, you know what I mean?
Yes. I thought I provided that they've signed a contract for purchase, which includes a provision, that they negotiate with the library in terms of a long-term lease and a coffee shop arrangement. The coffee shop arrangement is something that we're seeing in other public libraries, certainly in New Haven and Hartford and some other public libraries. It's a nice complement, it's a nice ability to help finance. The developer of that building was encouraged that there was a nearby school for teachers and students to use the library, thought that was a nice feature. He also likes its proximity to University of New Haven, to its students and faculty to use a coffee shop. So he was very encouraged by it. He's committing in the contract that he would negotiate a market rate deal for that facility. Also, would be negotiated by the Village Improvement Association, though, not the city council. So there's only so far I can go on that.
No, I know, but they'd, I believe we'd still get the backlash for it. But if you did, I'm sorry, maybe I just.
Yeah, I made, I made sure we signed the contract with that provision in it.
Okay. Have we gotten any follow-up from the library about? Has there been?
Yeah, I was presented with a multi-page document by your clerk this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to fully go through it.
Okay, so can, um, I'm, I'm, I love this whole idea of them being at the Blake, Blake Building and being so close to Kerrigan. Do we know, and if it's in the contract, I apologize, but I don't know where it is. What is the square footage compared to what the library has now, compared to what the Blake Building might offer them? Is it comparable? Is it smaller? Is it? them? Is it comparable? Is it smaller? Is it gonna be bigger? Do we have any idea?
Yeah, I think it would be either comparable or slightly smaller. Um, they actually have a pretty big footprint in Allentown, but I don't know that all that space is library space. Um, so we'd have to evaluate what exactly their needs are. You got to remember, the Blake Building has basement space too. So I say first floor, I'm talking about first floor for, for maybe the public to utilize, and then maybe office, storage, different aspects could be in the basement area.
Mm-hmm. Hmm. So, um, no, that's great. Um, so you don't, you, did you get a chance to read through the library's, um, at all? Like, did they do a synopsis of their thoughts about this?
Yeah, I mean, look, I don't like, I'm not going to try to... They could argue, they can talk about themselves, they can present for themselves. I don't want someone to argue that I'm trying to present their position, and then they say I mangled their position or didn't present it properly. Um, all I can say is, the spirit of everything that's in front of you is the adamant position of the mayor in consultation with members of your city council, that there should be an Allentown library presence, and we're going to work to try to ensure that that can take place.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Y'all set, Councilwoman Hosky? All right, I'll go to Councilman Cohen, and then Councilman Bruno, I see, next.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a couple of comments. Um, I think one of them was addressed. I know that the current library space at, um, it currently houses on the floor six thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet, so we're going to make the assumption that if they were to move to the Blake Building, that it would be about the same comparable space, although it's not been, been firm, it seems to be that way. However, I really have a problem with the whole proposal, because the market value in the Blake Building, as I understood, was sold four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or thereabout. And at the end of the day, we are getting two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I don't believe that this bid is, is really matching the five hundred thousand dollars of, of the library association. So at the end of the day, it's two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, it's not a five hundred thousand dollar bid. The other four or five years, they're basically holding in abeyance for taxes. Yes, we will earn some interest on it, and yes, they will do modifications to the building of one and a half to two million dollars, but I strongly believe that, um, this was underbid. I don't believe that this is, um, I'm very disappointed, to be honest with you, in Acorn, um, this particular bid, because it is just, um, it's, it's just not equal. Um, also, I am not thrilled with the library audit, with the, with the library's proposal either, to be honest with you. Um, and in terms of having a library anywhere throughout the city, we find it to be, I just, I'm scratching my head, where we haven't even gotten in, or we're just beginning to do the library audit that the council approved twenty-five thousand dollars for, and here we are, basically, that the, and maybe for very good reason, that there's been a bid put on by the, by the Village Improvement Association for a library in Allentown, when the study hasn't been completed yet, and both sides, both the cleaning and the Village, the Village Association, were at least to consider this audit, where quite honestly, if this goes through the way it is, it looks like we're just overlooking it. Um, I, I really, um, I guess my question really is, is, um, I don't like either bid, and what if we do nothing? Maybe we send it out for bid again? I really find this to be, um, just, just not appropriate, and just, and I, and I strongly, strongly do not support this in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Councilman Bruno?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, um, on the other half of the money, uh, let's say it's two hundred and ten thousand dollars, oh, that's going to go into escrow, is the city going to get any interest on this money?
Yes. I mean, it's, it's not going to be huge, but it's something.
Okay, so when you say it's something, what is it? If it's two hundred and ten thousand dollars over four to five years, what's it going to be, we're going to get interest on that?
I mean, it depends on the invest, investment vehicle we put it in. But I, you know, you're talking about probably two percent.
Okay. And that'll be in escrow over that timeframe?
It would be in escrow until they deplete it. Um, and it's in recognition that currently the library, Village Improvement Association buildings do not pay tax, and in their bid, they didn't indicate that they were willing to pay property tax if they bought the building. Nor would they be required to, as a nonprofit.
Okay. And, um, just one, one final question, Mr. Chairman. When the library placed their, uh, bid, did they have to submit, uh, any money to do so? Like, did they have to put money up in the bid?
My, my assumption is they had to put up a deposit, just like Acorn, and I will double-check on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any other discussion from any of the council members?
I had a follow-up, I may?
Uh, hold on, Councilman Cohen. Anybody for the first time? Councilwoman Finelli?
It's just to, to piggyback on, um, Councilman Cohen's question about the amount that Acorn is paying. What is the appraised value of the building?
Yeah, there were two appraisals. Um, I believe that the Acorn appraisal is within line of what they're bidding on their purchase price, and there was a separate appraisal done, wasn't done by a professional appraiser, it was an analysis by staff in the city. Um, we could have professional appraisals done if you want. Um, it is disconcerting that there are only two bids for the building, though, so, um, you know, what's the true value of a building, what people pay for it in the end? But you, the council's within its rights, if they think the building is worth more than what's being bid. Uh, there's plenty of times where you've had contracts that are bid, and we just don't award any... Or you can negotiate with the, with either one of the bidders.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I was just wondering if we knew. Almost up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hosky.
I just have a question, Lee, 'cause, um, so I'm interested in knowing how the, the, the thought is, the library would have to, um, apply for a mortgage, or the village improvement would have to apply for a mortgage, right, to pay for this building. So essentially, it could actually come back around if we award them, and tell me if I'm wrong, if we award them this bid and they can buy the building, they can actually put into their budget next year the money from us to pay for that mortgage. So we could actually, could we essentially end up paying for the building that they bought from us?
Well, their bid indicates that they believe their purchase of this would be revenue-neutral in terms of the resources that the council and the mayor approve through the budget process every year for the Village Improvement Association. Um, they, they want seven months to try to secure financing. I don't have any evidence that they've ever secured a mortgage for any purpose, so I don't know how that would go. Um, but it costs, we, the city currently carries the cost of the Allentown library. So I, I know, I'm not really sure where that money to operate the library comes.
So is that, yes, we could essentially be paying for their mortgage?
Well, look, they're going to go through the same bid, uh, budget process they always go through. And what I tried to give the council is a full picture of what I could find about their resources, uh, about what they've recorded in their IRS returns and so on and so forth. So I think you pretty much have a pretty full picture of, you know, what they're going to need, and I guess we could try to extrapolate how this would work out if they own the library.
Okay, Frank? Thank you, Lee. Frank?
Yes?
So next year, when the, um, library asks us for money, and it goes up, say, twenty-five thousand dollars, can one of their line items be to pay a mortgage for the building that they just purchased?
We don't have line items in the library.
Right. No, I know, but...
So, if, let's, let's take that, let's take that question, right, to the larger picture. So what I'm hearing then is the city is considering paying to buy its own library, by, by funding this?
Could that essentially happen? Because they could, they want with the money. So if we give them an addition, if they come for funding next year, and we award them a hu, uh, whatever it is, what, what do they want this year? How much? A hundred? What are we, what are they looking for this year?
We were looking for like a million, a million seven. We gave them a million four equals last year.
So we give them a million four this year. Next year, they can come back and request a million seven. Um, and part of that million seven could actually be us funding them, giving them monies that they can then turn around and pay their mortgage.
Theoretically, yes.
American dream. I'm just, I'm, I'm literally just trying to, I'm not saying that they're going to do that, but I'm just saying that probably we could literally be helping them buy a building we just sold them. Okay. And then, and again, you know, like, I think, um, Councilman Cohen said this, we get no taxes, we get no permits, I mean, we really get nothing except for requests from us to probably put a new roof on the building, do upgrades, do all these things. So I am less than impressed with the bid, because we're not literally selling it and getting anything out of it. We're really, in the end, we could end up getting just a bigger headache and end up with this building that we don't own, but we're paying for. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hosky. Councilman Cohen?
Yes, um, I, you know, I believe that Lee touched upon this, but I just, I'm just going to reinforce it. I, I, um, I don't believe we should be in any rush that we have to make any decisions tonight on either of these bids, because, um, I believe, not just myself, but I believe, some of us believe that, um, both of these bids are flawed. And I would strongly suggest, or if I can, if I can make a motion now, if I can't, I respect that, make a motion to please hold this, um, please hold this, um, until we, um, get more information. I, I don't necessarily believe that we should, um, need to accept either of these this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Um, just for point of interpretation.
If I can just, I don't want to read the library's response, but I just want to make one quote from it. It said that if they had been informed of the Blake potentiality, uh, they may not have bid on the building. They may not have submitted a bid package. I just think that's important for the council to know.
Thank you, Attorney Tarranin. Is there any other discussion from the council? Okay, the only point that I'd like to add, first off, tonight was for discussion. There was no intention to bring this to a vote this evening. We've got a lot of information that we have been submitted by Attorney Tarranin. We received a, a lengthy, um, packet of information just prior to the meeting that I think we should all, uh, look at. We do have the library coming in front of us tomorrow night for their budget for FY21, where I think some of these questions, um, should, should be asked. Uh, my thoughts on, on this is that I believe the library is in business to provide library services to the community. I don't really think they're in the business of building ownership, or should be. Um, I'd like to think that if we ask them, and I will ask them that tomorrow, that, that they would agree. I think the idea is, is they want to make sure that they continue to provide services to the people of Allentown in a location in Allentown. So if we all, um, could work toward that end, the Village Improvement Association, uh, the Acorn Group, city administration, the council, then I think together we could probably achieve that. But again, I think we have a little bit further to go, um, with this proposal. So if there's no other discussion on this tonight, we will hold this, and, uh, it'll be on the agenda again for our meeting in two weeks. Adoption of ordinance is previously presented. There are none. Councilman Galligan, I'm just watching you with, uh, with your lapdog there. So, um, next up is, uh, council liaison reports. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson, did you have something you wanted to talk about?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, um, just really quickly, the last Board of Ed meeting was canceled, and obviously, the, they're on spring break right now. Uh, but I spoke with, uh, Board of Ed Chairperson Kebby Waterfeld today, and I just wanted to, um, just sort of, uh, say thank you to what the teachers and administrators and, um, everybody have been doing to create online learning opportunities for our students. Um, you know, the teachers have been working really hard at, you know, something that they've not been trained in. Um, I know that, you know, technology situation isn't perfect, and that not all kids have the technology that they need, but teachers have worked hard at also creating, you know, hard copies of things. Um, there've been a number of teachers who have reported that there, there are high levels of engagement, you know, there's, their families, lots of, lots of the, um, families are engaged in online learning, and I think that's commendable. Um, I also wanted to just acknowledge the PTA, um, President Kim Kenny, who's done the Good Night West Haven, where she's gotten city council people and cheerleaders and teachers, um, to read to kids so that they can see their, you know, their teachers' faces and have some interaction with literacy. Um, so I just wanted to say thanks for all of that and acknowledge that, you know, these are strange times for everybody, but for teachers especially, you know, this is not something that they have had any, um, chance to put in action, and yet they did. So, um, like I said, they're on spring break right now, but, um, I just wanted to say thank you for that publicly.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson.
Yep.
Is there, um, any other liaison reports? All right. Um, is there any new business? Councilman Donovan?
Uh, yes, um, Councilwoman O'Connor has technical difficulties, so she, uh, asked if I would read something, which I was seconding this anyways. Um, to the Honorable Counsel, uh, I just want to let you know that on this Friday, from three to six PM at Johnny's Grill, care packages of non-perishable items will be distributed to restaurant workers. Uh, these employees are experiencing a significant financial hardship, uh, as their main portion of income is obviously derived from tips. This event is being coordinated by Darrell Cummings, and he is personally matching donations up to a maximum of five hundred dollars. Uh, if everyone on this council, uh, donates just ten dollars, we alone could get, uh, to half of his matching donation. Just consider how much you would have tipped your favorite waiter or waitress, uh, or bartender in the last few weeks. Donations can be dropped off, uh, to Danielle at Johnny's Grill, or contact Darrell, or even Roberta Garlock, uh, Garlock at, uh, via phone, text, or message, messenger. And remember to contact your favorite, uh, dining spot in any... and any restaurant employees that you know, to let them know that they can benefit from this. So I just wanted to read that into, um, for, she wanted me to read that into the minute.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Is there any other new business for this evening? All right, I'd like to thank everybody for this new venture here. I mean, it was a, a substantial meeting, almost, uh, two pu, two-plus hours. Um, it wasn't perfect, but I think we'll get better as we go along. I hope we don't have to go along for too much longer, but, um, we'll do what we need to do to keep everybody safe. Uh, that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Many people adjourn, second. We are adjourned, thank you all very much, stay safe.
Good night, everybody.
Hi.